We're all set then? Follow the meeting to order. Do the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Roll call.
Mr. Dakota?
Here.
Mr. Dillon?
Here.
Ms. Dougherty?
Here.
Mr. Hoey? Mayor Leahy?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Ms. Clark?
Here.
Seven present.
I need approval of the minutes. Motion to approve the regular school, regular meeting minutes of Lowell School Committee, December 9, 2020, place them on file by Mr. Dillon, second by Mr. Dakota. All right, now we're into the motions. First motion of the night, point of order, just, we need a substitute motion to refer this to the city council meeting, to the city council, so, motion, substitute motion by Mr. Dillon, second by Ms. Dougherty, to send Mr. Hoey's motion to the city council through the mayor's office. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion reads. Request they provide school committee superintendent with a detailed report outlining, I'm fogging up here, the city's planned budget for maintenance and improvements of school facilities in the FY 2022 budget, including plans for repair on heating systems, plumbing, broken windows, damaged interior walls, ahead of the start of the next school year, as well as resources which will be committed to increasing the daily maintenance work order completion rate, to ensure every student attends a school where physical building truly reflects the care and love Lowell has for its children and families. Motion seconded by Mr. Dakota. Mr. Hoey?
Thank you, Mayor. When I wrote this, I know I always say motions of mass destruction, well, this is one right here, maybe, that's the way the city could possibly take this, but I just really wanted to come out tonight to say thank you to Mr. Rick Underwood, Jim Hall, yourself, Mayor, just you three in a row, right there, I'd like to say, again, Rick Underwood, Jim Hall, and the mayor. I don't know anybody in the past four or five years that has spent as much time as those three worrying about our schools, so I want to thank you three. I also want to thank George Antis, I want to thank a friend of mine, John McDonough, because they kept pushing this issue with me, and the only thing I don't have in here is something about air conditioning, and I hope with Ms. Martin, I know she's watching us too, watching our back, and I know the high school is going to be a great thing. Mayor, when I wrote this motion, I had my daughter help me, and the end of it was when I was thinking about you, pal, okay? I know you've, you had a COVID mayor, first time we ever had one, pretty heavy-duty times right now, but the last part is my favorite, "to ensure every student attends a school where the physical building truly reflects the care and love Lowell has for its children and its families," and you represent that very well, pal. We just went through a pretty tough week, you know? It was fun, you didn't gavel me recently, but to me, this motion is one of the biggest things I've ever done, because we've had a lot of arguments, there's been a lot of heat over this, and I like to say we're throwing stones at each other, now it's time to just do our job, and thank you very much for the time, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Dillon?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's a great motion, you know, collaborating with the city on maintenance issues is something that, you know, I've, I've been interested in since I, since I started here. Unfortunately, we've had a lot of other things to work on, but, you know, hopefully this, this gets the conversation going, and allows us in the city council and the manager to work together on, on making sure that we do the right thing for our buildings in the future, so, good motion, thank you.
Anybody else, Ms. Clark?
Yeah, I just, I would second that in saying, you know, I think even this year there was opportunity to perhaps be in buildings where we don't have many people in them right now, and, you know, would this have been a good time to have taken care of some of the deferred maintenance that really is needed? I mean, I know at the daily school, just from my own personal experience, there's a staircase that's got a, you know, missing step, and there's a cone that's been on, on it for quite a while, and, you know, that really, it really does say something, or sends a message, so I think it is important that we work as hard as we can to address those issues, I know that's just a single issue, and there's many, but we would just ask that the other city really does what it can to help improve those facilities, and we know there's a number of reasons why things have been deferred, but, but now really is the time, and so, thank you for whatever you can do.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Next motion of the night, by Mr. Dakota. Ask superintendent look into ways of streamlining high school electives in order to offer various pandemic-related prep courses for seniors, who would otherwise have a need for remedial college courses, along with the cost. Seconded by Mr. Hoey, Mr. Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think it's been clear that we're very much concerned about some of the losses that are, especially our seniors going off to colleges, and what, what's been lost over this, this timeframe, we know that it's considerable, and if we can have an opportunity to make some minor changes, temporary as they may be, at the high school, so that we can have a, a space in there to offer a remedial this or remedial that, and, and I'm not even qualifying it by any particular subject, but if, if we can offer something that's going to get these kids ready to go to college, and they don't have to pay to take a remedial course at the college itself, to me, that's a win-win, so.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Reports of superintendent, six-one COVID-19 update, we do have a registered speaker, would you like the speaker to go first?
I think sometimes what we're learning is that the report is sometimes valuable to the speaker, and then prior to the committee's discussion, but I'll leave that up to the committee as a whole.
All right, we'll do the report first, and then we'll have the speaker.
Thank you. Dr. Hall will provide a update with where we stand in terms of COVID-19. Important point for the committee to keep in mind, towards the end of your packet, you have a motion made by the Board of Health requesting another joint meeting, those joint conversations we found to be highly beneficial, we would recommend a motion by the committee to respond to the Board of Health's motion and accept that opportunity if the committee feels so inclined. Dr. Hall will share the current data, and we're hopeful that that's an outcome of this conversation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dr. Hall?
Your mic, is your microphone on?
And we've also added data in regards to particular schools for the first time, to try to give you more information, and the public more information. And lastly, as the superintendent stated, the Board of Health, at their last meeting, asked, or suggested that there be another joint meeting, and the recommendation is for the committee to schedule that joint meeting with the Board of Health as requested.
Ms. Dougherty?
Do we need a motion on that?
Yeah.
Because I would move that we schedule that meeting as soon as convenient, I think...
Monday?
Monday, if the Board of Health can do it Monday, but I would make that motion.
Seconded by Mr. Dakota. So, motion made to schedule the special meeting Monday with the Board of Health, if possible. Sure, Mr. Dakota?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Would it be possible to give us the, the actually total of staff that are actually in each of those buildings as to, like, if, in, at the Butler, for instance, we have two, two members of the staff, out of, how many, do we know? That would be good to know.
I think that would be, we, we can update the, we can update the information for future reports to include that information, Mr. Dakota.
I think that would be great, thank you.
Are you all set?
Yes.
Okay, why don't we go to the speaker then, and then...
There was a motion on the floor, I don't know that...
No, we did, we approved it. The motion have the special meeting on Monday, yeah?
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, okay. Who's doing the speakers, then?
No, it's going to be speakers.
Speakers, sorry, the speak, the Zoom?
Yeah. There you go, yeah. You have the speaker list, Ms. Phillips, for this item?
So, the speaker is Paul Georges, item 6.1.
Paul, if you're there, you're all set to speak on item 6.1, and you have five minutes. Are you there?
I see him. Yes, I am, now I... Thank you.
Thank you.
I won't need five minutes, I, what I did want to do is, is part of the superintendent's report, he's indicated that for the next three days, well, now it will be five days because of the snow day tomorrow, and perhaps the next day, the sub-separate groups, the sub-separate educators who now are teaching the 500 most challenging, I think challenging, and media students in the district, and have been right along. It's been a form of contention, because those teachers, by and large, showed, you know, outstanding commitment to those students by choosing to do that at a time when they had a choice of going remote, or remaining, or, or staying in the, in the face-to-face environment today we're in with these high-needs students, and, and I thank them for that. However, their understanding, and a survey that I've done, we've done with our members, indicates that ninety, 100% of the teachers believe that the, the statement, which we've heard time and again from the superintendent, was, once the school district went into red for three successive weeks, we would all go remote. 100% of the teachers that we polled, that are in that subgroup, indicated that that was their belief, and that was what had been said, and I think it was said at school committee meetings and so on, I understand the state shifted what red meant, and all of that, and I get that. And 95% of the Paris remember specifically being told that three weeks in the red, and at that point, we would all go remote, be totally remote. As a matter of fact, the letter that came from the Board of Health didn't say, how, how deep are we going remote? It said, three weeks of this indicates that essentially our expectation is that you will go remote, and yet, two days before that move was to be made by everyone, the teachers and the sub-separate, teachers and paraprofessionals and sub-separate group were informed, no, they're going to continue to do this. Now, that was six weeks ago, and that, when those teachers signed up, we were in the green, the, the rate was 1%, the actual rate of contagion, if you want, or testing was 1%. It's now 12%. Teachers have asked, they've spoken in public participation, they've spoken at various times with the superintendent directly, I've sent you letters, asking you for your intervention on this, because frankly, many of them are frightened. The survey that we did over this, over a few days, indicates, the 77% of the Paris that are involved in doing that want to be out of it because of the high risk, the high risk associated with, with the, the status of the pandemic. It's never been worse, it's 12 times, or close to it, 12 times as prevalent as it was when they first signed on to do this, and from, I'm asking for intervention directly from the school committee on this. It's not fair, teachers and paraprofessionals are, most of them are afraid, we've asked, some of them have indicated, 70, there's actually 70, 17% of the teachers said they, they will tough it out regardless, their health conditions are good, and they feel good about it, and, and they want to do it, but that means 77% of those teachers at this point don't feel comfortable with it, excuse me, 83%. And it's similar numbers with the paraprofessionals, where 19% said that they're comfortable continually in that capacity, that means 81% are not.
All right, Paul, be, can, Paul, can I, if, if you don't mind, I interrupt, I mean, just before you go on, I think it's the intention of the superintendent, and I think you already announced, that we're going fully remote this coming week, right, until further notice, so just...
Well, if you look at the letter, John, Mr. Mayor...
Sure, yeah.
If you, if you, if you look at the letter that's addressed to you, it indicates, the expectation is that the teachers in those sub, in those sub-separate classrooms, those sub-separate classrooms will resume educating in building on the 4th of January, and that concerns me, because if the numbers don't say, if the numbers stay the same, or even if they're improved slightly, it still represents an extreme danger from my perspective, based upon the, the rapid acceleration of the pandemic in most communities across the country, but certainly in Lowell. And I'm looking for intervention, because I don't think it was fair to those teachers to just inform them, those teachers or paraprofessionals, to inform them at the last minute that they were going to continue with no consideration for how they felt about it, or seem to be consideration, it seemed to be more of a different kind of decision. We all agree, teachers, the, the children would be better off face-to-face instruction. However, the danger, you've got to balance it against the, the net gain as opposed to risk, and it just seems to me, and it seems to so many of those people who have already shown their commitment to this system, that they expected there to be more consideration for their health and safety, and there appears not to be to them in their opinion, and I think you've heard that testimony over the last several weeks. So I'm asking for direct intervention by the school committee, and as a matter of fact, the later question that we put in on the agenda is, what is the criteria by which we're going to determine, or it's going to be determined whether or not more kids come back in, we expand opportunities for kids, or we hold back on it, because it's very unclear to all of us, it seems to be somewhat whimsical without real concrete, and I understand Dusty has not made this easy, I understand the commissioner has not made this easy, and I understand the governor in many ways has not made it easy by changing, the changing the rules partway through the field, but you've got, we've got to take into consideration the health and safety of the people who dedicate their lives to educating students, and I'm asking for your intervention on that behalf.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, if you could, just to...
Do we take up the calendar at this time, too, with, I mean, this all intertwines, right?
Some of it does, and as a point of privilege, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, while Mr. Georges is still listening in, I don't know if he heard that there's going to be the joint meeting on Monday with the Board of Health, and I know Mr. Georges tends to like to participate in those meetings where we have these types of discussions, so I just wanted to say that again. Mr. Mayor, if we're going to take the, out of order, can I at least give an update to the community on 6.2 prior to moving, because I believe my recommendation's going to be that we table that to a later time, and we have a lot of interest within the community on that one, would you?
Yep, sure, take that out of order.
Sure, thank you, so six...
A motion to go out of order by Ms. Dougherty, second by Mr. Hoey.
So, 6.2... So 6.2, my recommendations, we table it because we're a little bit rushed due to the incoming inclement weather. And this item, there's a lot of interest, it's been high on the agenda of the committee for some time, and there's been a considerable amount of work. So I would like to, the opportunity to table it, move it to the next immediate meeting that allows us to not be rushed by weather. If that's amenable to the committee, I would, I would put that forward as a opportunity to table.
So I need a, so I need a motion to table this by Mr. Dillon, seconded by Ms. Doherty. All right, I didn't mean to confuse it, but, so we have, what's that? I can't hear you. Right, okay, all those in favor? Thank you. So why don't we finish with 6.1? So we're going to, so part of that is having the meeting on Monday, right?
Yes, part of it's having the meeting on Monday. We're also looking, very much looking forward to the data on Thursday. The city has taken several steps to mitigate the spread within the community. The one most obvious is the surveillance testing that's been ongoing. We will see the data on Thursday as to what that tells us. We'll be providing an update to the community subsequent to that data on Friday. Right now, we are district-wide remote due to the inclement weather this week, for the remainder of this week. And then next week, we move to district-wide full remote anyway as previously scheduled. We'll update the community on Friday after the data, and then on Monday, we're hopeful that we'll have that joint Board of Health meeting, which, where we'll be able to really dig into that data in depth with the health experts.
Okay, thank you. All right, so 7.1, why don't we do 7.1? The calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, it, would you like me to share, or does there need to be a motion for item out of order?
What's that?
Would you like me to begin with 7.1?
Yeah, we're already out of, taking things out of order, so we're going to go to 7.1.
Thank you.
Can I just, for housekeeping reasons too, can I just suggest next time that with something like this, you give us a cover letter with your, your choice, I guess, or the direction of the conversation? Then we'd be a little more, more prepared for the conversation.
Sure, this is, actually, this particular item was requested by the committee. So it doesn't come with a direct recommendation from the administration. What was requested of us was to share with the committee several options as it would impact the calendar. Ms. Desmond, who's our local expert on all things instructional hours and requirements, put together two options for the committee based on committee guidance, the, in addition to option A. Option A is your current status, status quo calendar. That would relate, and these options all relate to the holiday vacation or the winter vacation. So option A, the winter vacation concludes on January 4th. The questions of the committee were what happens to the calendar and what are the options before you if you so chose to extend the winter vacation because of the surge in COVID data and the likelihood of a vaccine becoming available within this current school year? The two options, as we heard it, that were requested of the committee is extending it for a week and substituting out the mid-winter vacation, which is in February. And then the, that's, and then the other option is extending it by a week and just adding that week on to the end of the school year because you didn't have the need to have snow days built in. There are some nuances to that, which Ms. Desmond can walk you through in order to come to a balanced calendar that you have in front of you if the committee has questions. Dr. Hall also, Mr. Georges and the U T L were kind enough to conduct a survey of U T L members. Dr. Hall has the results of the U T L survey in terms of preference of teachers that he can also share with the committee. We'll stand for providing any additional details, whatever be the desire of the committee. Option A is your current status quo, that's what we have in place right now. Each of them presents certain strengths and weaknesses, pros and cons, costs and benefits, so to speak.
Any questions from the committee, Mr. Dillon?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, as like, as much as I'd like to see us get to in-person instruction, I don't know that making a type of change like this is, you know, beneficial because there's so much unknown about, especially February, that's very close. We don't know that we would really pick up any instruction time in February. And so I think right now it's more important to at least keep the consistency with the kids. And having an extended break right now, especially, this Christmas isn't going to be as happy for a lot of people necessarily, you know, as Christmas typically is, it's different. And I think maintaining consistency and at least consistent contact with the kids is important right now. So I would, you know, suggest no change, thanks.
Anybody else? Mr. Howie?
Yes, I just have a question. The last day of school will be December 23rd, and if we moved the vacation, February vacation, when would a child go back to school? Is it February 22nd, that long?
No, they would, so, Mr. Howie, what, each option that was requested of us was to add an extra week on to the vacation time. So it would be a January 11th as opposed to a January 4th return. And then it has, each of the options have a different choice as to where you pick up those days, if you're taking five days. So the February vacation eliminates the February vacation, however, there is a holiday within that. So you have to add one more day on to the end of the school year, I believe, Ms. Desmond, if I'm speaking correctly. Whereas the other option, you go back to school on the same day, January 11th, but you don't touch the February vacation, you just add all five days on to the back end of the school year. Our teachers, the survey of teachers conducted by U T L was overwhelming in the direction that Mr. Dillon just spoke to. And again, as I shared, this was requested by the committee, just so you have options to discuss. It's not coming to you with a recommendation for any of the above.
Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor, I would concur with Mr. Dillon. After seeing that there was a good number, I think it was 458 teachers said they preferred to keep the calendar the way it is, I also heard from a number of families who said, please don't make a change now, that the, the children are in a routine, even though everybody recognizes that remote learning is much harder for both staff and the students. This idea of having them in a routine and getting used to it, and I think we're doing a much better job with remote learning, certainly than last March when everybody got thrown into it literally overnight. So I would, out of respect for the families and staff, I don't see that there's a benefit for us right now. I, I would, I would also think we should just keep it the way it is for now. But I do appreciate having the opportunity to discuss it. Things may be different in six weeks or eight weeks, I mean, you know, but right now, I think we should stick with what we have, thank you.
Mr. Dakota? We do have a registered speaker after this, so.
Okay, because I was going to make a motion that we accept the option A calendar.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second, does that mean it's going to stay the way it is, option A?
Yeah.
I second.
Sure, okay, why don't we hear from the speaker and then we'll vote.
The speaker is Monica Lombard, item 7.1.
If you're there, Monica, you're all set to go? You're all set, Monica?
Hi, my video has been going in and out on LTC, so I haven't, I, I caught like half a sentence of Boyd, so I, I know, Dr. Boyd, that you just said something about this, but I have no idea what it was.
So let me just, not to interrupt you, but let me just, it looks like we're not going to take any action, we're going to stay with the same calendar that we have right now, so it will be no change, so.
Nothing more to say.
Thank you, Monica, happy holidays.
You too.
All right, why don't we do a roll call then?
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Howie?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Okay, so now we'll get back to the agenda for reports on motions, 6.3.1, response to motion, Ms. Doherty? Any questions on your motion?
We're doing response to the motions, right?
Yeah, we're back to, yeah, report on the motion.
Oh, so we didn't, we skipped one then?
No, we, Dr. Boyd just said he's going to table that. Tabling.
No, but the next one is report motions, that's all the motions, right? Report on status of outstanding motions? Oh, we just have to accept it, except I did have a comment on the monthly report on motions. I had a couple of motions regarding training programs for the school side council. I'm on page two of the report on status of outstanding motions. So I know we had done some training last year, I was hoping to get back to the school side council at some point in the new year because we are going to be using those school side councils again for budget. And I know it was very rushed because you had the task of, you know, creating school side councils for all our schools, plus training them. So I just wanted to do an update on reaching out to those school side councils and doing continued training. And then the motion right under that was support for the Citywide Family Council. And I see that, you know, it's an ongoing collaborative plan, I'd be also looking for some communication. Back in 2018, we wanted to have an annual meeting where they would come before us and tell us what they've been working on, what their challenges are, just to kind of show the continued work being done with our parents and, and our school administrators. So I was hoping to just get those two, you know, up, up to your attention for the new year, to be working with our families with these two organizations, the Citywide Family Council and the school side councils.
Ms. Phillips, can you take that note?
That's it.
So I'm trying to get used to two different agendas, so you're right. So we do the reports on outstanding motions first, then we go into the sub-motions. So any questions on the outstanding motions? So I just had a couple of questions or comments. There seems to be, so there's two motions in there from School Committee Man Nutter, and it seems like it took, took a long time. So is there any reason why it took a year and a half to answer these? Mr. Superintendent?
I, I don't have a response right now, I can look into it. Each motion is sourced to each, each office, and depending on the level of research required and what comes up subsequent to it. The one suggestion I might have that would help is, at one point, the committee wanted to see the outstanding motions, the extended list. My understanding is historically, as we looked at motions being completed and reported on, they were removed from the list. Moving back in that direction, might be able to consolidate it, synthesize it in a way, so we can synthesize it in a way to report on them more, those that are more active and more current. I might suggest that we move back in that direction. What that would do, Mr. Mayor, is we, is as they're responded on and responded to and accepted by the committee, we would eliminate them from the list, they would stay in the record, of course, of the meetings, but they wouldn't stay on your running list of motions. That might be one suggestion. About the specifics, though, I'd have to go back and speak with the departments that were researching and responding to those to understand the length of time.
Okay, because I just, I would like to have this cleaned up. There's a lot of stuff in here a year, a year or older. And there's, it's just, it's just kind of messy. I have a response on eight and there's no status. And it's just request superintendent update committee on the adult education academic program, as well as the physical plant, and that was from October. So I just, I wasn't looking for a real, highly detailed report, but I was just looking for a report. And then same thing on page four, there's no status on the motion.
We can clean it up.
Sure, just, we need to go through this and just make sure that we can answer them in a timely fashion, so.
Is it amenable to the, is it amenable to the committee, Mr. Mayor, if we exit out those motions that have already been responded to, to clean up that, that report table further for the committee?
I mean, it's up to the committee, I thought that's what you did, I thought once they were reported on, they were done.
Historically, there was at one point a direction provided, but it wasn't within the current committee. So we can definitely take that and, and clean up that list. It is, it has been a recommendation as well from staff members to do such the same thing, so, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And there's one other motion in there from Mr. Nutter, but it's not listed anywhere. It's the request Lowell High Subcommittee meet to discuss possible adding of community service requirement to all grades to count towards graduation. Mr. Fiatto answered it, but I don't believe the Subcommittee met or maybe it did when I wasn't here, so. Just need to clean these reports up, that's all I'd ask, so. We'll get to Ms. Doherty's report, 6, sure, Ms. Clark first.
Sorry, I think I just noticed, though, Ms. Doherty, on the Citywide Family Council, on page three, it actually says that there's an extended invitation for them to present in spring of 2021. So is that the, is that the one you were looking for? Yeah, so I think it actually is, it's just on the following page, so maybe it was two separate item, line items. But I agree, the cleanup then would help because there's, yeah, so, thank you.
So now we're into the responses, so do you have any questions on your motions for 6.3.1? Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor, and I apologize that all these next reports are based on my motions. I guess you're going to be hearing from me a bit tonight, I'll try to be quick.
Yeah, no apologies, go ahead.
I thought this was a great, I found it very interesting to look at what other communities were doing. I really appreciate your work in terms of getting this information for us. Couple of quick questions, like with the, on page two, Methuen was supposed to go fully remote, 12.7, did that actually happen, do you know?
So Methuen went fully remote, they had a plan to return high-needs populations on 12.7. I'm not sure that that actually happened. So they went remote, I believe, right before the Thanksgiving holiday. I, I will go back and look, all of the memos about their transitions are on their webpage, so I'll go back and just double-check that and get that information to you.
And then with the communities, especially since we've been talking about how we're looking to get beyond that 25% when that day comes, the communities like Chelmsford, they're doing this, are they doing hybrid teaching? Any of these cohorts where they're on two days with one half and on two days with another half? So that means their teachers are doing in-person and virtual at the same time. And I noticed Drake, is that also the same? It's one week on, one week off, and so it's hybrid all the time. I think it would be interesting for us to get more information about how that's working for those communities before we consider, because I'm hearing mixed things. And I know all you, you know, it's not like you can get actual data, but just to try to dig a little deeper into this before you make recommendations for how we should go forward. Obviously, we do want to get more than 25% of our kids into school this school year. But how we best do that is going to be, you know, a challenge, I'd be looking for more information about how to do that. So that was my only comment on that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just to kind of follow up on that, I think we have to be very cautious about what is, what is the level of success in Drake and what's the level of success in Chelmsford? Because that doesn't necessarily translate to Lowell. So, I mean, we have to keep that in mind, whenever we look at any of these statistics, that it, it, it looks really good on paper, but it really won't work here for whatever reason it is. And I think we just have to be cautious about that, thank you.
I think it, it looks really good for us that we're, I mean, that's not quite, one-third of our students have already been vaccinated with the flu vaccine. So I'm, I'm hopeful we'll be able to stay on track with that, with the schedules of how we're doing it at the different schools at different times, so I, I thank you again for that information. So currently, the plan is that everybody would need to have the flu vaccine before they can come back in, correct?
That's the current guidance from, from D E S I and the Department of Health, but we continuously receive updates on, on that. So we're following the current guidance. I can certainly update the committee when, when and if that adjusts and changes. I can tell you, there was a lot more information being shared about flu vaccine prior to the availability of COVID vaccine. Now the information has started to shift to the, to the rollout of COVID vaccine. So I'll, I'll provide the committee with an update when it's available, but that's the current guidance from D E S I.
Any other questions on that? Next motion response, STEM Academy, Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. As my colleagues may. Um, as my colleagues may recall, this was a contentious motion to begin with. I think we had to talk about it for about an hour back in October, um, to get the information. And I'm disappointed to say that I don't think it's really a complete report. It's not a complete report. Um, I went back to the minutes of that meeting and, um, Mr. Dakota had asked for a comparison to look at how the numbers we find out about the amount of teachers and sta, and students who'd left the STEM, how that compares, what is the average regarding the number of staff who've left for all our schools. So that's missing. We need that, because I think that does put it in perspective. What I was able to tell just from, um, the information that's here, 47 teachers switched and 14 transferred out of the STEM. So that represents 30% of the total number of teachers who have switched from, you know, looking at all the schools. My question is, does that number of 14 teachers left the Rogers include teachers who left Lowell Public Schools completely? Or is that the total number of teachers who left the STEM Academy, 14? So that's a question. Then, you know, it was important for me, because I felt like it was a red flag, that we were having, um, teachers leaving and families leaving. I got a number of phone calls at the time, back in October, from parents. So when I looked at the, um, well, let's stay with the staff on the first page. We talked about, one teacher requested a telephone interview. So does that mean that all the 14 teachers were asked if they wanted a telephone interview and they all chose the survey? Through you to the superintendent.
Sure. Ms. Superintendent?
Dr. Hall, do you have, uh, further information on that?
Um, so as of right now, Ms. Doherty, they had the option to do any of the, um, three offered, or telephone, writing, or writing a letter, or emailing, whether it be anonymous or, uh, call. Thus far, I've got, um, two people that said they were going to fill out the survey. I haven't got it back yet, but I anticipate they will fill that out. I got a written response, uh, just before the meeting and it's not reflected, um, in the paperwork. And then I got a call, uh, that I referenced in the report.
So we don't have all the information here then, right? And everybody was given the opportunity to write a letter, a telephone interview, or a survey, right? Was there a survey? Because I, I had, um...
Yes, I attached the survey. So I took the 14 that transferred through the compendium process. I emailed each one of them the survey and indicated you could either call, fill out the survey, or send, uh, feedback either by mail or by email, depending upon if you want to be anonymous.
Okay. So obviously, we're going to get more complete information when you get those surveys in. Was that number of 14, does that all the staff that left the STEM? Or were there ones that didn't just transfer, that actually left the district?
Yeah. Those were the 14 that we saw left, um, by the compendium process. I don't know about retirees. I wasn't...
I'm, I'm sorry, I can't...
I wasn't aware of, um, ones that completely left the district, other than long-term subs who wouldn't have had any employment rights, but I could research that further if you wanted that detail.
I, I'm not as concerned about long-term subs, but you're confident that it was only 14 permanent staff members who left? And they left through, by transferring? There weren't any teachers who left to leave the publics, to leave Lowell?
I'm not aware of any, but I'd have to check that to be 100%.
Okay. So that would, that would be good to check?
Mm-hmm.
Because we want to have the complete information. So I did hear from teachers who said they didn't have time to respond. Um, I don't know when those, uh, surveys went out, but it, it, in terms of if they wanted to do it anonymously, which many people do, as do many parents, um, so we need to get, give them more time so we get a full report. Then I did also hear from a number of parents. So did you look at parents who've asked to transfer, who are waitlisted? Because I didn't see anything about that.
I don't have that information.
You don't, or you don't have informa, you wouldn't have access to parents who are on a waitlist to transfer out of a school?
I personally don't, uh, know. Um, I had a list of parents or children that left the district and, um, I did receive a, um, email, um, from someone that led me to discover, um, more parents. So I did send out additional, uh, letters, um, this morning as well.
Okay. So this number of parents that you're listing, uh, 21? Do you think there's more than 21 families now?
I do.
Okay. So I did hear from, um, five parents, and while I'm separating out one at four, um, told me that they, if, they didn't get a letter. Um, one person said, "I got a letter, but I thought it was regarding, I still wanted to homeschool. I didn't realize that there was a response required from me." And where we're talking about 21, I don't know how many more you've uncovered. I wonder if we could, you know, actually like call those families or email those families? We have contact information for them, I would assume. If they left Lowell, they have to have forwarding information so their records could go to their new school district. And, um, the reason I'm being a stickler, because many of these parents reached out to me in October. That was the whole impetus for this motion. Um, and I really think that, uh, and, and I'll reference last week's meeting. I know I had this really lengthy motion that the mayor, you know, complained about, and I also got other complaints about. We need accurate and complete information. We need the data to do our side of the job. Our governance, policymaking, making decisions that are going to benefit our community is based on us having good facts and comprehensive data. Um, and I understand that we're living in very strange times right now. But in order to move forward in a way that's going to be helpful, and we want to work collaboratively, I, I'm speaking for myself. I want to work collaboratively with our team, um, and with our staff, um, on the front lines. But we really do, we need the information. So the last point I'm going to bring up about this report and, and this, so I heard from five parents, one who is a waitlisted student, um, a couple who didn't get the letter, right? And then I heard from parents who were still in the district. And they were, um, concerned about the part of the report that talks about the staffing when the school opened. And I, and I'll refer you to, I believe it's the second page of the report, there's this huge paragraph that basically explains, "We had a hiring freeze. We didn't know what we were getting." It's a, it's a bunch of, um, excuses about issues with staffing. And we always have issues with staffing. We've, you know, with getting ready for the new year, I'm certainly on board that this was a, a new start like none other, trying to get back to school after what we had gone through. But the, the information is not factual. We knew that we had, I believe it was two sixth grade classes that did not have teachers on the first day of school. How did we know it? It was covered in, by the media, right? And that was from a parent. We knew, I, they were also fourth grade. I had a parent who called me today, who said, um, her child was one of those fourth grade classes, and they had a teacher the day after Columbus Day. That prior to that, they did not have a fourth grade teacher. And that was, I believe, October 12th. Um, and then this issue about Paris, I questioned from parents, is there a third grade parent teaching at the STEM Academy? A fifth grade parent teaching? So, um, I think if it, we had a hard start, and I've said this before to Dr. Boyd, there were issues with the, um, raffle, the way we, uh, tried to do the raffle, the way we did the waiting, you know, there were a lot of complicated things we tried to do. Not everything worked out perfectly. We're not a, a perfect world. We're made up of humans. But to come out front and say, "Okay, we started school and we didn't have a fourth grade teacher for, until October 12th for this class, or we didn't have sixth grade teachers for a couple of days." I mean, the idea of these sixth graders on the first day of school, sitting for 45 minutes, waiting for their computer to load up with the teacher, I mean, that's, it's a problem. But to admit it and say, "Okay, this is how we're going to move forward," but to not include it in a report that specifically asks for data about what's happening and happened at this school, um, I think we, I would be remiss in my role to not push back on that and to ask that we please, um, not accept this report yet until we get the full and accurate information. And I would make that in the form of a motion, uh, to ask for this report, to come back to us when we're able to get, uh, more data. I, I would like, if, if it's 21 families, if it's 30 families, let's do a bigger effort than just a phone call, uh, I mean, than just sending a letter that's, I, I'm hearing from parents they didn't get.
If I could, Ms., uh, Ms. Doherty?
I need a second.
Seconded by Ms. Martin. All those in favor?
No.
No? Okay. Why don't we do a quick roll call?
Well, I'm open to hear what Dr. Boyd would like to say. I, I'm, I'm looking to get the information. I don't know why anybody in this room, including the administration, would not want to get the information about how we can improve. That's why we're all here. We're not here to cover up, we're here to get the information.
I would submit that this is accurate information that was, uh, researched by four different staff members. And I think going back to what the mayor had requested, it would be helpful to know how much resources, how many resources does the committee want to commit to each of these reports? So the statement, Ms. Doherty, that you're bringing in question to it, says, "The report should also include an update on replacement staffing, both at the time of school opening and now, indicating whether all classes currently have licensed teachers in place and when that occurred." There were four staff members that responded and researched this, including the HR generalist, the assistant HR director, the HR executive secretary, as well as our chief operating officer. Uh, so they researched it, they did provide a response, um, that they provided as accurately as they could, based on the research that they conducted and the data available to them. If there is certain responses that we are looking for that may not come forward within the research, we have to be open to that. I don't, I, Dr. Hall can certainly look into it and research it further. I would ask the committee that we acknowledge and respect and understand that when people share out, they are being honest, they are not covering up, they are responding as well as they can with the information at their disposal. But a statement there that specifically says, "That response was provided," I would ask kindly and respectfully to the committee that if a motion is provided, also suggest, "How many hours do you want devoted to that?" That would help us to understand how in-depth do you want a research project to be and how much, uh, how lengthy do you want the report? Which would then also tell us at what point you expect that response to occur. This is many, many man-hours that have gone into this. And, uh, it also, I also want to make sure that we don't call into question people's integrity. This was four staff members that did respond as well as they possibly could with the information available to them. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'd just like to respond that Dr. Hall himself admitted here tonight that he didn't get all the teacher responses, that he, uh, recently learned there were more parents than he had outreach to. So I am in no way saying, in calling anybody's integrity into question. I'm saying, would have simply already been stated by Dr. Hall, that there is more information than what we have in front of us, and that we are entitled to get the complete report that we've asked for.
Mr. Hawey?
I appreciate it, Mayor. Thank you very much. Uh, the reason why I'm for this report is, this isn't the first time this school committee has ever faced having a principal out of control. That's what this report's about. This should be an executive session, as far as I'm concerned. Let me finish. Please, let me finish. Don't shake your head in front of me.
All right.
I'm telling you something right now. This problem with this particular school, we've had for a few years. We had a tremendous principal in there that got scared out of there for all kinds of reasons. That's why I say when we start talking about people, we always say executive session. This might be one that should be in there. Because now that I can have my opinion right here, I thought this was a witch hunt, to be honest with you. Okay? So I want the newer colleagues to hear me that there's something to this, but this report is a fine report. Uh, we have ano, another gentleman named Mr. Gillery that's in charge of principals, and I, I, I'm pretty sure that he did a lot of work looking into this situation. And there's a lot more to say that I can't say. That's why I'm saying maybe this needs to go into an executive session. Thank you very much.
Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I don't know, would it be overreaching, Dr. Hall, for us to see a copy of the survey itself that went out? Are we entitled to see that? I mean, I'm just, just a question, I don't know.
That's fine.
Could we? Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Clark?
Thank you. I also appreciate the amount of time and effort that went into, uh, responding to this. Um, I think that when we ask people to complete a survey in whatever fashion, it really is still up to the individual, whether it be a teacher or a family member, to reply. And we are not requiring that people reply. So continuing to dig, perhaps really will yield similar results. I think that, uh, the other piece that I'd like to just make mention of, and I think, Dr. Boyd, you, you know, referenced, many hours have gone into this. I think, you know, and I, I completely agree, Ms. Doherty, we want to be getting good information back when we ask for it. Data collection is important, but it's important that we have systems that support that collection, whether it be HR data, whether it be graduation data. You know, one of the things that we heard in the presentation from last week about the KPIs was if, if we took the system, uh, some, that we currently use and we're pulling data out, uh, if the data is, it could tell potentially a story, like how many credits a student has, are they, the question, are they on track to graduate? But if we just total the number of credits, which is what the system we have is really capable of doing, it might tell a story that says, "We have more students on track to graduate than are really, uh, on track to graduate." Because it's not breaking it down in the way that we need to break down to say, "Are they meeting the requirements of graduation?" Not just, "How many credits do they have?" So while I appreciate, we do want data, a lot of this data that we're asking for is subjective. We're not, I mean, other than, I think we've got information on how many teachers moved out, how many families have moved out. But when we get down to asking people questions about, "Why did they do something?", uh, and again, it is not, it's not required that anyone respond to us. So I think that we have a lot of, uh, we have a lot of things that we need to focus on, and I think some overall, um, overarching items, uh, in terms of some of this, um, I think we just need to be aware of how much effort it really does take. Not to say it's not important that we collect it, should we get into the practice of being, of asking for, uh, information from the people who request to transfer? Maybe that is something that we should put in place. It should be, I think, broader than just what's happening in this particular school. And I think as a school committee, I believe that's the direction we should be going for, as well as asking for the right supports and systems in place to do that work, so that it isn't requiring, uh, people to be picking up the telephone to call family members, to call. If this is really the direction that we want to go with our time, energy resources, then I think we should be talking about, what are the systems that we get in place to help support that work? So, thank you.
Ms. Martin?
Oh, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Um, you know, I'd, I'd certainly, uh, support the request for us to get the, uh, full information, um, as has been indicated that we have not gotten, so the additional, um, responses from, uh, the surveyed individuals. So it would be, uh, I'd certainly support getting that complete picture. I do think that when you're looking at a district where 47 teachers moved and one-third of those teachers were in one out of 22, say, school communities, there's probably something that we should find out. Uh, and I think that our due diligence is that, uh, we need to, uh, do this investigation and find out what the concerns are. Uh, I have received, um, similar, um, outreach from both staff and, um, families, uh, who expressed concerns around this report. Um, you know, some particularly around the, the, um, information that there were only two classrooms that weren't staffed, when in fact, there was closer to six. I think, you know, these are facts. Um, so I think we, if, if the report is not showing that to us, and yet, it should be very easy for us to factually say, "How many teachers were in their classrooms, ready to go on that first day of school?" I think we need to ensure that, that everything is aligning. Um, because quite honestly, the slightest deviation, um, becomes a much, much bigger problem. Uh, I think that to, uh, the superintendent's point of the time and effort that goes into these reports, I certainly appreciate that. I think that, you know, based on what we're looking at here, most of this information, not including the, the survey information, obviously, were simple metrics that we track. I mean, our HR office can... were simple metrics that we track. I mean, our HR office can tell us, you know, how many positions were open and how many positions were filled. So, you know, I appreciate that pulling that information may take some time, but I will say that in an environment like this, the natural result is that if you thought that this motion was long and detailed and somewhat torturous, no offense, they're going to get worse. Because if we need to ask our questions with more and more minute detail, that makes the job more difficult for you and for us. So an open sharing of information that is, you know, in line in that, you know, we can pull from the resources that we have, I think will give all of us better information to make these decisions and would allow us not to keep returning over and over again to issues when we feel we're not getting the complete picture. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Doherty, any further comments?
I just want to say one more thing. I did print out a bunch of the emails and my phone died on me yesterday, so I only had one or two texts that I could pull out. But these teachers and parents who reached out to me said they didn't get a chance to participate. That, you know, I had the parent who, two parents said, I didn't see a letter. If it came to me, I didn't get it. A parent said, I got some letter, but I didn't know I needed to respond to something. And then five teachers who said they didn't get their, they didn't get it in time. So it's not like people are choosing not to respond. They actually reached out to me to say, is it too late because I really wanted to respond? I wasn't given a deadline, or I was told I could mail it? I mean, I don't know when some of those went out. Dr. Hall, if you want to talk about that. But if they got it Thursday, they couldn't mail it in time for this report. We got the report Friday. So I'm just, I'm sending it back and saying, please just give us the information that we asked for.
All right. Why don't we take a roll call on the report? The motion is for, to send the motion back, and we'll take care of that, and then we'll, we'll discuss the new report when it comes in. Roll call.
Mr. Dakota? Mr. Dillon?
No.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Howey?
No.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
No.
Foye, Strine, motion passes.
Next report, Mr. Dillon.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess, first question, Dr. Boyd, maybe, do you have any insight on, I know a couple of schools in the Merrimack Valley recently went or delayed maybe their seasons or their athletics, or stopped them for a time right now. Is that affecting anything going on in the conference? Or are those individual schools making their own decisions?
Yeah, we meet-
Dr. Boyd?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I apologize. There's a, I meet with the superintendent collectively, the Merrimack Valley Conference, almost weekly to go through decisions. We try to make decisions collectively. In nearly all cases, we've been able to come to some consensus to make collective decisions because you simply can't operate on interscholastic league without a league.
Yep.
So, and we've, we've signed on to all of those joint messages. I can send each of those out. I'm not aware of individual decisions by others outside of those joint. Ms. Desmond, are you?
I had, I had just heard of individual decisions very recently. So I, that worried me about the whole conference that, you know.
Yeah, that could, it certainly could have an impact back.
It may be a temporary decision by them also. You know, it might just be a holiday season type thing. But, so if you don't know, then, you know, anytime you get, if you do get any information from the conference, I'd appreciate that and how it would affect it. You know, but that's schools making their individual decisions. I was, I was also happy to see all the 21st century programs. I didn't realize that they were this extensive or that there was this much going on throughout the city, which is, I mean, you can look through all the different, you know, mock trial, computer programming, guitar lessons. I mean, there are a lot of cool, cool programs going on that our kids have a chance to participate in. And I, I hope, you know, we continue to support them and, you know, allow them to meet in person the best that we can moving forward. So thank you for the report. I appreciate it.
Any questions on the report? Ms. Clark?
I just think if there's any way that we can get this information about the after-school programs, especially at our elementary and middle school levels, I think it would be great if the website or somehow we could get this information out there. Because I think sometimes unless you receive, you know, sometimes it used to be a piece of paper coming home, you know, it sometimes can be missed. Maybe it is living on a website, but I do find it sometimes difficult to locate these programs. And, and I think for our families who, who, you know, it would be helpful to have these available somewhere. And I know that's hard because that also requires maintenance of our websites, maybe, you know, pretty, pretty regularly. But I think if there's any way we can get it up there, that would be very helpful to our families, for our families.
Mr. Mayor, if I could. So Ms. Phillips, if you can take note, one thing we've been working really hard on is, given the absence of the opportunity for informal communication, just the face-to-face conversations you have when you pass one another, when you see one another, we've been trying to increase and been working consciously to increase the amount of formal communication. So we are starting up formal staff Zoom check-ins. We're going to do a winter check-in next week, actually, with, with all staff as an opportunity. That invitation went out. Ms. Phillips is working on through her office a monthly newsletter that'll be able to go out community-wide. And we plan to do those formal conversations. I call them formal because they're scheduled, they're structured, but we hope to be able to fill the gap that usually happens informally when people gather and see each other organically. So I think we'll work to make sure we add that to the list of things that we know we got to communicate out and not open up to the committee. Any other ideas or suggestions for other things that you're seeing that we should be and should find a way to communicate out, we're going to work to do that. We've increased communication significantly, but we've been very aware and cognizant of the fact that we have not been able to completely fill the gap of those valuable informal conversations that occur when you're able to work side by side with one another and see each other out in the community. So, Ms. Phillips, if you can take that note, and we'll continue to give the committee updates as we go to.
And I think your comment just reminded me of two things. I think, you know, perhaps we did get this more newsletter licenses for all schools. I mean, having the lists within the newsletters would be, you know, I think enough for our families and for, and then also online so that people can navigate through different newsletters to see what exactly is going on. And the other, I just also wanted to say thank you because today I just received some text messages about, from Lowell Public Schools, and I was very excited to receive that because I think it's just an additional way that people receive information. I know I use a lot of text, so I just wanted to acknowledge that and say thank you for those additional methods of communication.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. I was curious, as we're looking at some of the types of programming that are being offered, and I also am impressed by the 21st century programming that we're offering. Is there a way to get numbers for how many are attending? I mean, you know, to be realistic, I know that listed at the Moriah National Park tours, those aren't happening, you know. So is there some, some substitute that's going on there? I mean, just getting a sense of what the actual numbers are for participation. I think to Ms. Clark's point that we certainly need to promote them better and being able to get the information out would be great. But I think just having a baseline as we're promoting these here tonight and the superintendent's support for them, it would be great to see exactly how many students are able to participate in, in all of these different offerings. I'd also say the same for the sports because I know that we're, we're looking at phase one right now of tryouts and, and getting kind of ramped up for what will be a launch in, I guess, January 11th. So having a sense of what the numbers are for the different sports activities.
Ms. Desmond, do you have a response now? Would you like to provide that under separate cover?
Sure. I'll be happy to put down the numbers of students participating in the activities. The National Park tours did transfer to a virtual experience this time. So we are doing the tours, but it's virtual. So, so we are, we are running those virtual. And then once things go back hopefully to normal, we'll transition back to the actual experience. But I'll, I'll get those numbers for the next time.
Thank you.
Sure. Mr. Howey first, and then Ms. Doherty.
I'll brief, I'll be brief, Mayor. Number one, I'm so glad Ms. Desmond's in charge. It's under her umbrella about athletics and sports and all that thing. So I'm really happy about that. Today I seen Mike Dillon on TV, City Life again, I like to mention it. And he said, get up off the couch. And I was on the couch and I got up. I'm not kidding you. I went out and did two roof repairs, one on my house and one on Parkview Avenue. So, Mike, people are starting to listen. I know you're only on City Life right now, but it's important, very important. I look at the almost 80 kids this new football coach got out there practicing all the time, and I drive by and look at him, and I'm saying, oh, please let them play football in February because our dropout rate has tripled. And if we lose football, to me, out of that 80, we might lose another 20 kids. So I think Mr. Dillon's been doing a great job in a lot of areas, but when it said, when he says get up off the couch, I think it's very important. I've been, I've been doing a lot of couch myself. So thanks, Mike.
Thank you. Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want, I, I agree with Ms. Martin. It'd be great to get the numbers for each of these activities. But I wanted to point out to my colleagues that recently, just in the last couple of years, we reinstated the Future Educators of America Club at the high school. And that was directly aligned with our, trying to get more of our students interested in going into education, becoming the future teachers for Lowell Public Schools. And I think it's, it's just a great program. And I'd love to hear how many students are involved in Ms. Pigeon's Future Educators of America class. So that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions on this one? Next report, any questions? Ms. Clark? Quality of food?
Thank you. I appreciate what went into this. I was very happy to see the, the way that our local food is being incorporated in. I am curious, I know, of course, this being a different year, but what, I see that we selected some premium products, two of which can continue during this pandemic, the lettuce, it looks like in the white meat chicken nuggets, but not the pizza. What are, do we have other options? I mean, I know we've talked about food service and actually having a surplus of money in that account that perhaps we, you know, do we have, because I don't necessarily see from this that we're at the top tier of all product categories. And I just am curious, what does that look like? Are there other ways that we can improve what's going on right now? What's being served both in school and remote, you know, the to-go lunches? So it's just a follow-up question about our additional options.
Yeah, Dr. Hall is working actively with our food service provider. So he certainly, can you take that note, Dr. Hall added to your conversations, our goal is to continuously upgrade and provide out as highest quality food as we possibly can. And again, we were quite proud of the upgrades we had made right before we went out from the pandemic. We're going to continue to make strides here now. We'd finally gotten to a place, and it was actually, I say it all the time, it was Mr. Howey and I's last visit to a school because he had given me the challenge at one point of finding him a school lunch that he was willing to eat. And I think I finally had found one before we went out for the pandemic back in the spring. And so we're going to continue to work on it. Dr. Hall, if you can take that note and then follow on with Ms. Clark.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. And I just also wanted to say that I appreciate the work that goes into, you know, to preparing this, but also just preparing the meals and getting them to families. I think the proactive approach even going into this storm that is coming, you know, the communication that went out about, you know, how to pick up meals, where they'd be available, the additional meals that are going out because of this, and the fact that we've already distributed over a million meals is just, that's a huge number. So thank you very much for everyone who's involved in that hard work. Thank you.
Did you, you, part of your motion was to ask about what we're spending for money. Did you have a question about that?
I think it really goes to my follow-up question of what additional options do we have to perhaps improve food quality in other areas? Because what I got from this report was we improved it in a few areas, but it's not necessarily across the board. So, yeah. I would think that might come back as some additional options of where we can be, move up to a more premium level. So.
Because that's kind of what sparked the conversation last week when we put the motion on. So if we can get that information, that'd be good. Mr. Dillon?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Ms. Clark that, you know, food quality is really, the numbers are impressive, and it's amazing that, you know, we have been feeding people all along and over the million mark for, you know, meals provided is, is great. But, you know, the bad reviews piling up and, you know, I've seen some of the bad lunches myself. And, you know, we even, you know, a million meals is great, but, you know, the quality is horrendous. And, you know, if, I think we need to look into, like Ms. Clark said, either upgrading or moving on from Aramark because they're just not, it's not fitting the bill for us. If it's something that we can't afford, then we may maybe we need to look for other opportunities because quality really needs to be important here rather than quantity, you know, as impressive as those numbers are. I just make that suggestion. You know, I know we've had our issues with Aramark, and we need to continue to pressure them to make sure they're providing the quality food regardless of if it's COVID or not. You know, throw some cold vegetables in, you know, in a box, and it's better than some of the stuff that has come out. So keep that, we need to keep that pressure and continue to push for better quality. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dillon. And I believe that question's been asked of another committee member. If it's acceptable and amenable to the committee, I would, we can invite Aramark to present out what it should look like, what you should be experiencing. So as you hear these concerns, you know what the expectation is, what the standard is, what you're paying for, and then what you're receiving. They have made themselves available for that, given, again, the pressure of the weather in front of us. I would suggest we put that on an agenda item for a future meeting, or we could even do a subcommittee meeting, Mr. Mayor, if you'd, if you'd prefer. That's now two committee members that have asked that very question about our provider. So we can talk about that outside, I guess, of this meeting, Mr. Mayor, if you'd rather that be a subcommittee or a, or a presentation to the full.
Okay. We'll bring that up. Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to agree with my colleagues who've spoken before. I think that, you know, we've done a lot more with the local. We're seeing that connection. The lettuce, the real chicken, that's good. But there's been other areas, as Mr. Dillon alluded to, that really is not high standard. And so I just really want to see if I'm understanding correctly, we set the tier. We say we want high-quality food, right? We have a contract with Aramark that they guarantee we'll make a certain amount of money from the food service. So if we up and say, we want, we don't want chicken ham, we want real ham in your ham and cheese sandwiches, for instance, does that take off their profit? Because they still have to meet our requirement. They're making a commitment to give us a certain amount of money, which is how we build up the food service. So if someone could please explain to us how the financing is working, that we have the authority to say, we want top-tier quality food, right?
Yeah, that's the very decision that the committee made last year, actually, was in relation to the, I believe at that time, Dr. Hall, what we said is we wanted to mirror the, the contract stipulations that were at the Voke. At that time, when I was going through schools, I was hearing rave reviews from our students who had siblings at the Voke, yet they didn't feel the same about their food. And when I researched it, they, the Voke also had Aramark. So we were able to bring that up to a level. I believe the challenge when you researched it, Dr. Hall, this time was the, what's available and what Aramark has available to meet the requirements, meet the requirements for grab and go, is the difference between what we were able to stipulate last year. Dr. Hall, do you have additional data on that? Or is that something we would want to bring back to the committee with, along with the Aramark presentation directly?
I think the subcommittee is a good idea where they could discuss it with Aramark for a long time.
There's, have it within a subcommittee. Would that be amenable to the committee as a whole? We can have this one item?
I don't care how we meet. I'm just thinking, and I think we talked about this the last time, that even a grab and go meal can have quality, you know, like a real piece of ham as opposed to chicken ham or whatever, you know. But we're looking for consistent, high quality across all the meals, right? Not just chicken and locally sourced lettuce. So I'm not sure what the disconnect is.
Neither am I.
If you're doing a grab and go meal, what's available, what's available is real ham. I mean, that's out there.
We're all, we're all on the same page with this, with what the desire, the goal is. And we've actually now resolving our deficit budget. There's a lot within the food services. There's more flexibility and opportunity. So I do want to get a chance for you to see what your current vendor and provider has at their disposal, what the standard should be as you're get, when you get concerns. And then clearly, as a couple of committee members have said, a contract with an external vendor is something that's right- members have said, a contract with an external vendor is something that's right within the, the committee's purview to make a determination if that standard can't be met. So, we can do that full study. We're going to continue to research it. And our goal is the same as all of your goal. Our kids need to get top-quality food and we're going to make sure that, that, that we find a way to make that happen. So.
Does any, can anybody here tonight answer my question about the funding and how that's played out? Like, what is the commitment that Aramac makes to us? Because I remember the days when we were losing seven hundred and fifty thousand a year, when we were doing the food internally. That's why we went outside to a vendor. But I, I don't know if anybody here, I don't know if Ms. Turner understands the contract or?
Sure. Well, sure. Ms. Turner, can you share how that works? Very typical when you internalize food services, that it's a losing enterprise. I'm not surprised you had that experience financially. Ms. Turner, do you have the details to share?
If I understood the question correctly, you're asking whether or not Aramac, they, they commit to a certain profit or a return on the investment. So, that is what builds up the revolving account balance when we keep our costs low and then still bring in the reimbursement rate per child, per male. So, this year, we don't have a guaranteed commitment because of the fact that we're not, we're doing, I think it's thirty percent of what we normally would do. So, the commitment that they promised may not be, I mean, they may not be able to reach that. But we still have a very healthy account that has more than enough to bring in the full quality meals. So, we can reach, is that what you're asking? Like?
Right. So, if we wanted to have high-tier quality food across the board, not just chicken and lettuce, we can do that.
Right. And then you would have less of a commitment instead of bringing in one-point-eight, like if they commit to a one-point-eight?
What are they committing to?
Right now, it's approximately a million dollars, but a one-point-two million dollars, I believe. But if we, what you're asking is, can we say, just commit to get, bringing in four hundred thousand dollars extra per year and let us invest each year in better quality food? And that's a wise decision right now, being that you do, you can't go too, we don't want to be broke, but we also can't exceed that ceiling that they give, which is three months of operating expenses. So, right now, we're in a position that we could start doing that. And then when you start seeing the numbers go low, then maybe you can sit there and play with the quality again, but not, not bring the quality down, but you, you can make your choices at that point. But right now, you can definitely do what you're suggesting. Thank you.
I don't like chicken ham either. Turkey, turkey ham maybe, but chicken ham, I don't know, that doesn't sound appetizing. There is a.
Sure, Mr. Hoi?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Ms. Clark, nice job again, but this is like deja vu to me. Bob Gignac was sitting here one time. He had a meal, pretty nasty meal back then, too. So, to me, this company right here has two strikes on it. I've never voted for their contract. I'll never vote for them again. And not only have they given us two bad meals, if they do it again, we should be looking at getting a new vendor because, believe me, we're good to all our vendors. But when they start to treat you like this, and they also, in my opinion, they have lied to the superintendents in the past, meaning when you're going to get a reimbursement rate, they might tell you guys, oh, yeah, you're going to get eighty-five percent, you're going to get ninety percent. Then you might find out you're only getting thirty-five percent. So, I already know this company has lied to us, too. It ain't just been bad meals. And what I want to finally say is this, I know at the end of the month, I, Bob Gignac told me that they're going to send Lowell a hundred thousand dollars at the end of the month because of COVID for food service. So, we're going to get an extra hundred grand. Now, to me, this company doesn't even take care of their health real good. If it wasn't for, for our staff right here and, and our COO, Jim Hall, trying to get these people extra money because they have worked above and beyond compared to a lot of other people. And that hundred thousand, maybe we could use a little bit of that on helping our staff, the kitchen staff. They're, they're at the bottom of the barrel when it comes to money. And some of those people don't get a lot of hours, not a lot of benefits. But don't forget, we're the ones paying them. And, and the food company says, oh, yeah, we're going to give you a million and a half. Okay. They're making a lot of dough. I don't know if we could ever replace them, but we could look at Walmart, we could look at other places and might be able to feed them better. So, I say, we send a loud message. If you do this again to us, that's strike three, we're going to move toward getting rid of you. So, you better shape up or ship out. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on this motion? List of eligible teachers.
The next two are procedural. You'll see these on the agenda, regular scheduled intervals. The recommendation for six-four and six-five, if the committee can accept those in a bunch as reports of progress. Six-six, I believe, has to be a roll call. So, Mr. Mayor, I would recommend six-four, six-five together as reports of progress.
Move to approve.
Okay. Motion to accept six-one through six-five by Mr. Hoi, seconded by Mr. Dillon. Roll call. We need a roll call. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Home education, motion to approve. Any questions on home education? Yep, motion approved by Ms. Clark, seconded by Mr. Hoi. Roll call.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Darney?
Yes.
Mr. Hoi?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Seven-two, permission to post athletic training position, Mr. Superintendent.
Budget, budget transfer, Mr. Mayor.
What's that?
Seven-two's the budget transfer, and then seven-three is the permission to post?
Uh.
Am I reading it out of order?
Yeah, I get seven-two is permission to post and then seven-three is budget transfer.
Okay. As long as we have the minutes that reflect accurately. Seven, so, permission to post, athletic trainer. This has been discussed multiple times over. This is a temporary position. Permission to post would enable us fifteen days, Dr. Hall, that the position would be posted. Ms. Desmond, as the, has the lead of athletics under, within her department, available for questions. Dr. Hall handles the hiring within HR. He's available for questions as well. If there are any financial questions, Ms. Turner's also been involved. It's been an extensive work. The recommendation is approval as written.
Any questions, Mr. Dillon?
No, I approve. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to post by Mr. Dillon, seconded by Ms. Clark. Roll call.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Darney?
Yes.
Mr. Hoi?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Seven-three, budget transfer?
Thank you. It's within pack, within your packet. Ms., Ms. Turner is available for questions. Recommendations, approval as written.
Any questions? Ms., yeah, I just had a question. What's, so, this is for what, Ms. Turner?
The transfer is a school asking to move money from one account to another. So, if they realize they don't need as much general supplies right now because everyone's remote, they might have moved it to technology and used it for that. So, it's just a school making a transfer.
Taking money from general supply and putting it into where?
I, I believe it was technology. I'm finding it right now. Yeah, professional, yes, professional development. So, they did, they wanted to move their own money. They get a school site budget each year and they often move money around depending upon their needs. So, being that they don't need as much general supplies this year, they're going to use it for PD on remote learning and things like that. They increase their PD cost. So, schools get to, they get PD in, in addition to the central office PD.
Okay. All right. Motion by Ms. Clark to approve, seconded by Mr. Dillon. Roll call.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Mr. Darney?
Yes.
Mr. Hoi?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Seven-four, Communication for United Teachers of Lowell. We have registered speaker. You want to go first, Mr. Superintendent?
No, just going to advise the committee, this is an opportunity that the United Teachers of Lowell have within their collective bargaining agreement with the committee to request items on the agenda. They're taking advantage of that, that provision of the CBA here. So.
Okay. We have a registered speaker?
Yeah, you have, you have two, you have two though. You have Mr. Georges and then you have another speaker as well.
Hello, School Committee. My name is Smith for Beach Road in Westford, Massachusetts. Thank you for listening tonight. I haven't spoken here before, so bear with me. I'm a little nervous. I'm, I'm sitting here wondering how it's possible that I can be under so much stress about making these choices between potential life and death situations. And I know it doesn't seem that way to everyone. But for me, this is a reality. I'm home. I'm not doing things I normally did. I'm home because my doctor highly recommends it. I don't go shopping. I don't go to the gym. I don't see my parents anymore unless we're outside. And this is all being done to protect me and, and stop the spread. I recently found out that I won't qualify for remote teaching anymore. Why should it matter how my immune system is compromised? How did I qualify before and not now? I have had a chronic health condition since I was twenty-six that changed my life, unfortunately, and forces me to be on an injectable drug that weakens my immune system. My disease is invisible to everyone, but I live with it every day and I try not to let it rule my life. The virus has changed that, unfortunately, for just a short time. Let's hope. I've never ever let my disease impact my work, even when I'm at my worst. I have shown up and made it work with a smile on my face in the worst of my health conditions. I've only taken a handful of days off in my thirteen years in Lowell, and those have been for medical procedures that I need related to my disease, a few times every other year or so. Most people don't know I have a condition, so this is hard for me to put out in public. And I know how important this is. I look perfectly healthy on the outside, but I'm not. And nothing is fair about any of this or the situation we're in. I was approved before and now I'm not. And the only thing that's changed are increasing numbers and I'm fearful now, fearful now more than ever. It's not fair to have to choose between my health and my job, which I love and I need. Currently, I'm connecting and doing sessions while remote and safe. We are reaching students who are high needs and academically and supporting them as well as emotionally and socially. Some of my students are actually even engaging better because they have their headphones on and they are working in a, you know, with a direct visual with less distractions. Students are learning important lessons through this strange time beyond what we can teach in school. They will be flexible, hardworking, resilient, and now they're going to be part of history. Working from home is not easy and actually it's more work a lot of the time. I'm a speech pathologist and I travel between schools as we have high caseloads in the city. This also makes me uncomfortable when thinking about going back. How will I be able to do my job if I'm constantly nervous and holding my breath waiting for the ball to drop? This may also cause teachers to take, this decision could also cause teachers to have to take extra sick days or leaves of absence. During that time, for example, my services would stop and they're part of IEPs which need to be met. There are not substitutes for us that are easily found. Also, this week, I have found out that students in my school who have, I would be potentially working with if I had been in person, did test positive. People from my cohort have been close contacts and quarantined more than once with only a few kids physically in the school. This is scary and this is real. Please help us do what is right and safe for the community and not only those who truly need to stay home for, like myself. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any comments, Mr. Superintendent, on this?
No, I, no, I do want to thank the speaker. She mentioned it was her first time speaking and was nervous. She did quite well in articulating her experiences. I would, I would recommend a motion to ha, to bring this back to us as an administration and we can provide a response to UTL as requested.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I have a quick comment on that?
Sure. Mr. Hoi?
I think, I, I didn't hear the speaker real well, but I thought she said she was a speech pathologist, maybe?
Yes.
And she said they're hard to find. That, that is a big concern of mine right now. I think we're, we were down to maybe only one that wasn't tested positive. And you have about a couple of hundreds still. I follow this issue really as much as any other issue. You've got about a couple of hundred of people that, or children that didn't have an initial IEP yet. And that's my big concern, if we can keep that going, because those are the children that, we're all concerned about it, but I'm more concerned about it because we don't see those children. And, and I still feel they're safer in school. So, it's something we have to stay on top of. Can you just tell me if we're still moving on the initial evaluations right now?
Ms. Desmond? Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Desmond, Mr. Hoi is asking about the initial.
Could you clarify the question, though?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm, I'm wondering, I know we still have children that need the initial evaluation. They need it done on them. I would say, the last time I even checked on it, there's a couple of hundred anyways. Are we still doing those?
Yeah. So, the initial evaluations, the, the initial evaluations from pre, from the closure up until this point are completed. Any, initial evaluations come along whenever a family member may require them. So, as they come, they're, they're being addressed as they come. But we don't have any backlog in the evaluations, if that makes sense.
You don't. Okay. Thank you.
So, the evaluation's for IEPs, you mean? And we're saying we don't have any, I mean, we're hearing differently, so I don't want to start calling things.
These are initial evaluations. So, when, when a, a school requests an evaluation of, of a student for the first time or a family request, that's an initial evaluation. So, it's different from existing plans that come up for reevaluation. So, that's, that's why I was trying to clarify which you were asking about. Reevaluations happen every three years and that's on a schedule. And so, as those come up, they're being addressed. But those are constantly coming up, so the numbers are constantly moving.
Okay. Thank you. And before we move on from this, Mr. Superintendent, I just want people, you know, to know that are listening and watching the meeting. I'm not sure what the speaker was quite talking about. I didn't want her to get too, you know, personal with us, but I'm sure that we're working with people, right? If there's some issue that is, you know, you're required by your doctor not to show up in person, that we are taking those into account, right? So, I would want to assure people that we are taking each case, I guess, case by case, right? And not just denying people and.
Yeah. Each, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I do want to heed your, your warning, make sure we're not talking about individualized situations. So, our standard approach here is any, anybody who's experiencing a circumstance that they believe themselves to be at risk, they message into our human resource office. The threshold we use is the CDC threshold in order to guarantee remote work. Now, remember, we are district-wide remote right now. But in order to guarantee remote work for the duration of this pandemic, the threshold that we use is the CDC threshold. So, anybody that's viewing, if you look on the CDC webpage, there's different tiers. The highest-risk threshold is the threshold that we utilize to guarantee remote work. Now, there's a number of other individualized accommodations that can provide out, but in terms of assurance, anybody that's within that highest-risk category is automatically provided out with that accommodation. Then there's all kinds of individualized. Dr. Hall personally works at that regularly, each and every day, receives in those requests, has that correspondence and that discussion. I don't, I don't want to go further down asking questions of that individual employee and I don't want to, but that's the threshold that we tip, that we follow as a district.
Okay. Thank you. So.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure. Mr. Dillon?
Yeah, thank you. Maybe to Dr. Boyd, is there, I, I understand that we, you know, we don't want to talk specifics, but is, is there a reason right now why? we don't want to talk specifics, but, um, is, is there a reason right now why, why someone would have been, uh, able to meet the criteria for a, a health condition, and now they are not? Is that changing guidelines possibly, or...?
Not, not today. Uh, you know what? I'd have to make some assumptions. I'd like to follow up.
All right, so it might be, yeah, okay.
Given that, but, Mr. Dillon, given the area under which she was speaking, perhaps she was alluding to, to future conversations within the UTL.
Gotcha, okay. Yeah, I just wasn't aware of any reason why, right now, that would change. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I need a, uh, so we need a roll call for this, right, Mayor? Yeah, I know. All right, motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Howie, drinking water. Roll call?
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Oh, didn't she already go? Excuse me. I don't see him on the list here, but I just have one speaker on my list.
There's a, Ms., Mr. Georges had identified himself for both items. I believe he spoke to both earlier. Uh, let me, let me quickly text Mr. Georges and see if he wants to speak again, or what would you like to do?
Is he up on the screen?
He's up there. You, oh, you want to check with him? I believe he spoke to both earlier.
All right, we'll go to the speaker. I don't have him on my list, but if you have him there, why don't we go to him?
Yeah, it says both items on there next to it. We have different lists.
I got a different list, but go ahead. If he's up there and you want to speak, Mr. Georges?
Paul, do you want to speak again? Is he up? I think I see him coming up there. Is that him?
Did you unmute yourself, Paul?
Uh, no, yeah, there you go. In fact, I'm holding the, uh, holding my phone at this point, so, uh, I just wanted to relate back to the, one of the questions that, um, this seems, this seems to be, I, I referred to it my first question, uh, my first, uh, when I spoke earlier. Um, we're not real clear on what the criteria is to, to bring kids back or not bring kids back, or in some cases, go back, go, go to remote. Uh, you know, uh, and it doesn't seem to be in hard copy any place where we can rely on it so that we have enough sort of an agreement on it, or even a, a clearer understanding. Um, we, and that's where I brought up the thing about the commissioner and the governor and so on. There seem to be, uh, shifting tides here about, and, and a lot of it, the thing that concerns me the most is it seems to be a political nature. Uh, because right now, we're suffering, Lowell is suffering, and the, and, and the state in general, and certainly the country, has, uh, seen a real peak, a real spark on this, on pandemic, that seems to me, and again, I'm going to try to, try to advise on, uh, safety having to do with prioritizing safety and, and public health, uh, particularly of, of the, the individuals in the classroom, including students. It just seems to me that since we, there is so much progress that's been made toward a vaccine, to err on the side of caution when it comes to this. We don't know the long-term ramifications of people, that, that are on people who end up getting this, uh, coronavirus and appear to be pretty good, but as we hear more about these things, we find out the long-term, term effects. Some people live with long-term effects, and some, I'm sure, will not even be discovered for a while. So, when I hear things about, well, the kids are safe, or the kids are asymptomatic, or it doesn't really bother them, I'm not sure about that. And all I'm saying is, for the sake of, they're projecting now that educated probably will end up getting, uh, some will be getting the, uh, the vaccine in February. Why should we race to a situation where we put more people together, whether it be in individual schools, or expecting, uh, people teaching remotely to come into schools, which has been suggested, or any of that? Why do that at this particular point when we're on the cusp of having some, some real changes that can guarantee the health and safety of the practitioners and also the students in, in the buildings? Uh, again, I, the motion is to get clear information about what, what the expectations are as far as changing the number of folks in buildings, bringing kids back, or possibly, I would just make the argument, right now is probably the most dangerous Lowell has had, just simply by looking at the number of infections and the percentage of infections that, what is it, eleven, a little over eleven percent? And again, I, I want to go back to the teachers, who are teachers and paraprofessionals, in the largely separate or sub-separate classrooms, who continue to be in those rooms. I don't think that they've been given fair consideration. I know they have not been. As a matter of fact, I'm very concerned, because it seems to me, they, of the goodness of their heart, they extended themselves to continue in a situation that be, only becomes more difficult and more dangerous as time goes on. So, we, I, I appreciate the fact the superintendent made the decision for at least three days next week, and now it looks like the snow days will make it five, of, of going remote, but I, I seriously want the school committee to intervene, uh, and try to influence that decision, because it seems to me it's just foolish to take vulnerable students, vulnerable students, and put them in a situation where they're dealing with the worst time during a pandemic in, in the community. Um, and, and I'm just looking for your intervention. That was my request, and now we're looking for some kind of standard by which we can, we can not predict, but at least understand when the decision is made to bring more kids in online. Uh, so I thank you for the consideration.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, so we're, uh, Mr. Dillon?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I just don't like to, uh, remind everybody that, uh, the UTL was not comfortable with our numbers back in September when they were, uh, pretty much zero. Um, so, I don't know exactly what they might be looking for, um, when it comes to specifics, because, you know, uh, if we do make something specific and we meet those standards, it'll be something else. Um, so, I don't, I don't know exactly what he's talking about, and as far as, uh, the decision-making being political, uh, I would say that the UTL following to a T, the Massachusetts and National Teachers Union message, uh, I would say there's a lot political coming from that side as well. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Um, roll call?
Just something quick, uh, through you, Mayor, to the superintendent. Roughly, how many, uh, staff members came to work, uh, during the COVID? Was it like three hundred and something staff members?
I think we're kind of getting off base.
No, it's really not. It has a lot to do with it.
Dr. Hall, do you have that number off the top of your head?
Let me just say it this way. I know there was at least three or four hundred teachers that volunteered to commit to work, and when we're behind all these closed doors executive session, believe me, this school committee is pro-teacher. It's nothing to do with teachers. It has a little bit to do with the top and the unions. I think Mr. Dillon has a lot of valid questions. I just think that, I want the teachers and the staff to know that we respected what you did, because as far as I'm concerned, you crossed the picket line with your main union. So, you should be very proud of yourself to come in and deal with the kids that need it real bad, and, uh, you know how I am with teachers. I never voted against a pay raise. I think teachers are still underpaid, and I can't wait till we talk money. One thing I can say about UTL that I'm very proud of, uh, I haven't heard a thing about money. They're worrying about safety, and I'm going to tell you something right now. I'm a little scared myself, but I have to come to work. I have to come do this job. I'm a diabetic. I'm, I'm sixty-six. I am not going to even, I'm going to take a vac, a vaccine when it comes to show my family we should take it. I believe in science. It's all about ninety-five percent. So, I just want to say it's not about the teachers, it's about the unions, the top of the unions, and I'm not happy with them either. So, thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Thank you for the time, Mayor.
All right, roll call?
Mr. Dillon? I already got you, Mr. Dakota.
Oh, yes.
Mr. Arti? Mr. Howie?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Professional Development, Members of United Teachers Lowell hereby donate thirteen sick leave days to Katie Dillon, Lincoln School teacher. Any questions? Motion approved by Ms. Arti, seconded by Mr. Dakota. Roll call?
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Mr. Arti?
Yes.
Mr. Howie?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
All right, and then, uh, lastly, before we adjourn, I'd like to wish everybody a safe and happy holidays. Uh, thank you to all the teachers and families for participating. Uh, it's not been an easy start to the year, so we appreciate everybody's sacrifice. And, uh, just to note, um, that the next meeting is, uh, January sixth, so we'll, the, being, the first on that Friday, the packets will go out January fourth. So, any questions?
We are going to be meeting with the Health Department, too, this year.
Well, yeah, we have the meeting coming up, but the next scheduled, thank you. Motion adjourned by Ms. Clark, seconded by Mr. Dillon. Thank you. Yeah, almost. Everybody's Cosby and Toch, those pockets.